Okay, Rufus is here, Nicole is here, Dan is here, and Del is here.
Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Fairmont School Board. It is Tuesday, November fourteenth. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a quorum.
Okay, so we have a quorum, we're missing Danielle and Julie.
Mm-hmm.
Minutes from last time?
I move to approve the minutes from the October twenty-fourth, 2017 school board meeting.
Second.
Meeting, motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the agenda, we have a few changes. Nicole is going to address the MSBA, Del is going to do medical leave, and Joe's going to talk about CER. So with those changes...
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion in second, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And, celebrations. Joe?
Yep, thanks, Dr. Rodriguez. Tonight we have, I have the opportunity tonight to read the proclamation for American Education Week. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality; and whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future; and whereas education employees, be they teachers, custodians, bus drivers, administrative assistants, librarians, aides, and I'm going to add administrators, and school board members, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism; and whereas schools are community linchpins bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders and elected officials in a common enterprise. Now therefore, I Joseph E. Brown Senior, serving as the Superintendent of Fairmont Area Schools, do hereby proclaim November thirteen to November seventeen as the observance of American Education Week. I'll sign that today.
Thank you.
And tonight we have a special speaker. We have Mrs. Joyce Forster, who is the president of our local Teachers Education Minnesota Fairmont, and with her, I think she has a few students.
Good evening. I'm proud to be here tonight representing the many hard, dedicated, hard-working educators of Education Minnesota Fairmont and celebrating the ninety-sixth anniversary of American Education Week. As an organization, our main goal is to improve the educational opportunities for our students. We work hard to be prepared and well-organized with motivating lessons for our students. We go the extra mile to help our students' needs and help meet our students' needs and find success. Secondly, Education Minnesota Fairmont works to help our profession by providing training opportunities to better our instruction, meeting with other teachers across the state to exchange ideas, and to keep abreast on current trends in education. Lastly, our organization believes in giving back to the community of Fairmont, which supports us so fully. We do this in a variety of ways. We have a float in the homecoming parade and pass out books to our kids. We ring the bell for the Salvation Army for a number of days at the local grocery store. We participate at the career fair at the high school, in which we man a booth to give information about the teaching profession. We head up a school-wide food drive in March in which the students bring canned goods to restock the local food shelves. We then go on, am I missing my second page, but I do remember it. Then we also have the big parade in June, which we give out lots and lots of books. We raised over three thousand dollars from local contributions last year to purchase books for the parade. We gave out two thousand five hundred books last year, with about thirty-seven educators passing out books that day. It has become something, a part of Interlock and Heritage Days Parade that people look forward to. We also have a friend of education, I think Del? I think you were one of, the police force was our friend of education one year. And we also have a Teacher of the Year, and this year our Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Erin Myers, who is a fourth-grade teacher at Fairmont Elementary, and she is going to be in the state competition as well. I also wanted to bring a few students along tonight to, for them to share what education means to them, and they have written some essays, and we'll read them tonight. Our first one is Morgan, how do you say your last name, honey? Madison? She's not in my classroom, what's her name, Madison?
Doherty.
Doherty, so she's going to come first, Madison? Oh, you got to read into the microphone. I'll put it down.
Educ- Educ-
You're fine.
Education is important to me because I can learn history, multiplying, and a lot more. When you will get a job, you need to know that stuff. You also make mistakes. Mistakes are good, most importantly, you learn from your mistakes. Not anyone can take education away from you. It's fun to learn something new every day.
Thank you, Madison. And next we will have Jones Balfour.
Education is important to me because if I didn't have an education, my brain would be like a...
Jones...
Can you start over, Joan?
You're going to have to speak up.
Read it to the microphone.
Education is important to me because if I didn't have an education, my brain would be like a potato. I wouldn't be able to count money, read, or do math. I wouldn't be able to get a good job. I wouldn't be able to have my business where I could do truck repairs. So I am going to go to college so I can get my business and be able to do all of those things.
Wow.
And lastly, we have Shaylee Robeson.
My education is important to me. Education is important to our class because it can lead us to a bright future. It can help us soar like eagles and make a difference in the world. At Fairmont Elementary School, we learn many things each and every day. We learn how to solve math problems, we learn how to read so we can enjoy great books, and also find information around topics like animals. We get to have art class and learn about great painters such as Picasso and Matisse. We get to exercise and play games in physical education. We learn the notes and the beats in music class. In science and social studies, we learn about the world around us. In respect class, we learn about living above the line and treating people with respect. And education will help us reach our goals and make our dreams come true. We love Fairmont Elementary.
Thank you, all three of you did an awesome job. And maybe you can go back and show it on TV and you can see yourselves on TV. Wow.
Mrs. Forster, can we get a picture of the three students and you together?
Yes, but before I go, I just want to thank the Fairmont community and our school board for all the support you give us teachers. It's very much a pleasure and an honor to work in Fairmont. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madison, Jones, and Shaylee, that was excellent. Well done. You guys, you guys did a great job tonight. And whatever we can do to help you in your education, you just make sure you let us know.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next Superintendent's report.
Thank you so much, Rufus. First of all, I want to thank the community and all our faculty and support staff for the well wishes and thoughts and prayers. I've been gone for seven weeks and I just returned last Monday, and it's great to be back in Fairmont Area Schools. Let's look at our calendar, the pink sheet here. We have a couple of important meetings coming up in the future. The main one is on Thursday, November sixteenth at four-thirty, and for those of you that can attend that meeting, that will be held at the high school, not at the business office, because we're going to have a high school curriculum committee meeting there, and that will start around four-thirty. And for those of you that can make it, that'll be great. And then just a reminder to the community that Thanksgiving break is Wednesday, November twenty-second through Friday, November twenty-fourth, so there's no school on that Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. And then our next school board meetings are November twenty-eighth and December the twelfth. For an enrollment update, pleased to report that we're currently serving eight-hundred-and-sixty-five students in the elementary and eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine at the high school, for a total of one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-four. That's down, that's actually up six students from where we were at this point a year ago. And we had a few migrant, a couple of migrant families that relocated to the southern part of the country, so we did lose a few students over the last few weeks. But we also gained a few students, so we're at one-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-four, so enrollment looks very, very strong. Also wanted to touch base a little bit. I just returned from Brainerd, Minnesota this afternoon. I was up there for a conference, the Minnesota Rural, the Minnesota Rural Education Association, and last summer they contacted me and they asked if I would come and speak about the vocational programs that we have here at Fairmont Area Schools. And specifically, they wanted to learn about how we pay for them, because as you know, many schools across the state have dropped their programs. And Fairmont is one that's, you need to keep that. Fairmont is one that is growing, and I'm just giving the board members a copy of the PowerPoint presentation I put together. And this would be something too I'd be glad to present either at a future board meeting or at maybe a Bureau fourteen. The point of the story, you know, what we do here in Fairmont is not that, we're not doing rocket science, but we're doing very basic things. And the basic things that we're doing, we're communicating with our friends and neighbors, our city council, we communicate with our county commissioners, we communicate with the Chamber of Commerce, and we communicate with other schools in the region. We have a lot of collaboration. And you, when you think about that, you think, well, jeez, of course you should be doing that. But the fact of the matter is, most schools across the state don't do that. They don't feel comfortable doing that. And we actually put together a list here, and I, I'm going to make sure we email that out to the board, but I asked Judy to go through the last five years of the school board to find out how many dollars have been donated just to the vocational programs in the last five years. And they've been donated to the Ag Academy, and this is over and above the original three-hundred thousand that went to the Ag Academy. So Ag Academy, FFA program, greenhouse, mechatronics, robotics, vocational programs, the welding academy. Here's the total, four-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. And now a hundred-and-thirty of that came from, a hundred-and-thirty thousand came from the school board. Thirty thousand to rebuild our equipment at our construction trades program. And then a year ago, we put a hundred thousand dollars away to be used in our vocational programs over the last year and this year for any specific equipment that they may need to enhance their programs. But once again, very proud of what we have here. And also pointed out too, though, that in addition to this, we also have a significant number of college and the schools programs. And it's just kind of amazing, once again. And when I talked about the collaboration, especially with our welding academy, I gave the example that we've had a Saturday welding class. For one time, we did that last spring. We've had two summer welding classes. And I am working with my local state representative back home, Representative Peggy Bennett. Peggy Bennett is the vice-chairwoman of the House Education Committee. And she's agreed to draft a piece of legislation for schools. It only adds one section to the Minnesota code, and it simply would allow school districts to generate state aid for vocational programs that are taught outside of the traditional school day. In other words, in the evening, or on Saturdays, or in the summer. And the rationale for that is, what we find is that we have many students in our high school that are really interested in going into the trades. But because they may have failed a math class, or an English class, or a science class, or a social studies class, now the next year they have to take two of those. And so their high school schedule gets so jammed up, they have no time to take the classes that they really want to take. And so by offering a class, or we also, on the other hand, I know, I'm looking at you, Nicole, we had students at the very high level, that their schedules are so jammed up because of the college classes, the music classes, the Spanish classes they're taking, that they don't have time to take it during the regular day. And so what our school board has been willing to do for our community is that we've been willing to fund these programs either out of our general fund or out of the generous contributions that we receive from corporations and businesses, and grants that we receive from the community and the state. And the whole program at Minnesota Rural Education Association was centered on the Voice for Greater Minnesota. It was all based on the whole idea about future-ready students, about getting students ready for life after high school. And again, it's focused on the two areas, those that are going off to a traditional four-year school and graduate school, and those that are going to be the skilled workforce. Minnesota needs both of these type of people. And the number of skilled workers, a gentleman from Minnesota Deed, the Department of Education Development, spoke at three different sections, and he just kept hammering home the idea that for every, for every five skilled workers that are currently working in Minnesota right now, when those folks leave, and a third of them will retire in the next five years because of their age, but for, let's say five people retire, there's only one person already, ready to go take that job. So there's an eighty percent deficit in the number of skilled workers to go into the areas. And the two areas that they're really most concerned about right now are electrical and plumbing. Construction is third. And, but the number-one job that's growing faster than any job in Minnesota right now is in the area of food service and hospitality. That area is just booming. And that's a good news. The bad news is, it doesn't really pay that much. But the places that do pay a lot, a hundred thousand plus, electrical and plumbing. And so Mr. Trader and I, we are already working with Day Plumbing and Dwar Electric. We talked to them already last September to see if they would be willing to teach a summer class in plumbing or electrical under the new Tier One licensing system. Because to do that, you only need five years of trades experience to be a teacher, to teach those skilled areas. And once again, I, whenever I go to these conferences, I always come back so pumped because I'm always so proud of what we do here. And again, it's so simple. And if people would just talk to each other and then ask. And we're willing to do both. And so, once again, I was trying to get out of this presentation because I knew I was going to be gone for a few weeks, but they just insisted that this was so timely. And I had a great, the presentation went very good. It just, it was great, and just had a lot of good feedback from the people that attended. Most of the people that go to Minnesota Rural Education Association tend to be school board members and curriculum directors and some superintendents. But a lot of school board members were there, and there was a lot of discussion about us. So, once again, Fairmont's on the map.
And that's a lot to do with you. So first of all, welcome back. And thanks for the leadership in this because the vocational component and of that four-hundred thousand or north of, there's like sixty-four different contributing organizations. And that's because of unity and the collaboration and the conversations that you're having, and that, not to like brag for us, but this is a big board issue too. So that's no small task, and it, all of the work that's done here is remarkable. So, thanks, welcome back. And this is exciting because those are high-need jobs in our own community too. So we have work to do still.
We're on the right track, but we still have work to do.
Yep, we're halfway there.
Yeah, it's important to recognize and thank our community and our businesses for all their support for our schools and our students. It's remarkable and great to be a part of.
Yeah, and it's really nice too because they, the organizations like the plumbing, the different entities, they don't just complain and/or point out a problem. They come with real solving skills to this and contributions with time, talents, efforts. It's, obviously I'm biased, but we're really heading in a great direction. And you're, you're leading that, so thank you. It's good to have you back.
And we have great faculty and support staff, and we're blessed there. The, you know, I give the example that we, we live in the breadbasket of America. When you think about the one-point-nine-million hogs that we produce in Martin County, the two ethanol plants, and the soybean crushing plant, and the thousands of acres of corn and soybean, and all the agricultural areas that we're involved in, plus the manufacturing, it's just a terrific part of the country to live in. And, but I also use the analogy that being in an ag community, we have a lot of silos. And to make this work, we need to eliminate philosophically, we need to eliminate the silos. You know, city, and county, and school, and chamber, they can't be separate anymore. There's not enough time and money to do that. We got to blend everybody together. And that's what this community, that's what makes Fairmont and Martin County so unique, is that we work together. I love talking to the head of the Chamber of Commerce, Margaret Dillard, because she comes from another community, and she, she just can't believe the collaboration that business and industry and schools, public and private, and homeschool, you know, the, once again, there's not that many communities where the private schools and the public schools work together. You know, we provide food service and bussing and textbooks and special ed to our Catholic and Lutheran schools. We have a strong relationship with our homeschool kids. It's just, it's a special place. And sometimes I have to drive two-hundred-and-six miles away and listen to other folks at lunch and dinner, and then come back and go, wow. So thank you for letting me be here.
Thank you for being here.
And I'd like to just add one thing too. The reason I think that we go forward with these things is that the folks that you mentioned in the leadership are, in this community, are excellent listeners. And they take people seriously when they come forward with ideas, problems, solutions. It's not just, oh yeah, and then, and then it gets blown off. So if you have an idea, or if you have a complaint or a solution, you can be confident in bringing those forward to the leadership in this community, and something will get done about them. And that's another big factor that can't be overlooked, so thank you again.
Okay, very good. Sue, financials.
Tonight we have in the agenda the approval of the October two-thousand-seventeen Treasurers Report and Single Checks, the wire transfers from October twentieth through November ninth, and the payment of the November fourteenth bills. I'll begin with the wires and transfers from October twentieth to November ninth. The second one down shows that the net payroll for October was five-hundred-and-forty-six thousand. And then if you go down about three more, you can see that we received eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand from Martin County. We've always received county dollars, but now just starting this month, they're coming to us electronically, so they'll show up on this report. So we receive money in November, February, and May. And so this was the first and second advance in November that we received. So there's, we received some on October twenty-sixth and some on November third. And then on the bottom, for the month of October, the total payroll disbursements were one-million-one-hundred-and-twelve thousand. And on the flip side, you have the October two-thousand-seventeen Treasurers Report. So we have all of the different funds and the accounts within each fund listed and the end-of-the-month cash balance. Any questions? Then I'll move to the Single Checks. We did have an extra week between board meetings, so there's times when, you know, we have that fifth week in a month. Sometimes we'll have a few extra Single Checks. Many months we don't have any Single Checks. So just a couple to bring to your attention here. The first one made out to Mr. Bob Bonk. This was for the state cross-country meals for the athletes and the coaches. And then a couple down from there, check number sixty thousand, four-thirty-four, made out to Region Two A Minnesota State High School League. We hosted a section football game here in Fairmont on October twenty-eighth, and this is the gate. So we collect that gate and then turn that in to the section. And then moving to the checks dated today, November fourteenth, I just have a few to highlight. Check number sixty thousand, four-forty-four, made out to Center Creek Orchard. Our kindergarten students went on a field trip on October eighteenth to the orchard, and they used their student activity funds to do that. Check number sixty thousand, four-eighty, made out to Martin County Treasurer. This was for a new permanent antenna in the ceiling at Fairmont Elementary. It's a signal boost. And so this allows law enforcement to have communication in our buildings. We had some dead zones, and there was a grant that was written for this. And then this is Fairmont Area Schools' portion to pay for that. Check number sixty thousand, five-oh-four, made out to the Staybridge Suites in Eagan. This is for the rooms for the state cross-country. We had ten girls that attended the state cross-country meet. Seven were in the race and three alternates, and they finished in fifth place. And then there were three all-state runners, and that is if you finish in the top twenty-five, you're an all-state runner. So we did have three runners that were all-state. Any questions on that register? And then you have in your packet a P-card batch, or a P-card check register. So I just have a couple there. One of them is made out to EMC Insurance. This is a quarterly payment for our property liability and work comp insurance, and we pay that with our P-card. And then there is a payment to Minnesota Secretary of State, and this is for the lean on the hunt farm. So once we finalize who the renter is going to be for the hunt farm for the two-thousand-and-eighteen growing season, then we do put a lean on that crop with Secretary of State to make sure they pay the rent. Have any questions? In the absence of Julie, her and I did communicate via email on all of the reports and registers.
Okay. I move to approve the October two-thousand-seventeen Treasurers Report and Single Checks, wire transfers for ten-twenty-two thousand seventeen to eleven-nine-two thousand seventeen, and payment for November fourteen-two thousand seventeen bills.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Sue.
Yep, you're welcome.
We have no old business, new business, four-oh-three-B approved vendor list, Dan?
This we discussed at our recent Operations Committee meeting. The New York Life Insurance Company has requested to be a four-oh-three-B vendor for our district. The insurance agent, Joel Anderson, has talked with Jerry Brooks and Education Minnesota Fairmont, has approved this request. Final approval to add New York Life to the vendor list must be granted by the board. And once approved, our insurance carrier, EBC, will amend the current plan accordingly. And in Appendix A, we have a list of the vendors that already work with different employees of the district. So I would make a motion to approve the addition of New York Life Insurance Company on the district's four-oh-three-B approved vendor list.
Second.
Motion in second, in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, the MSBA conference?
Yep, the Minnesota School Board Association Conference for the winter is going to be held January eleventh and twelfth, and any time there's an overnight conference board approval is needed for expenditure funds. And this year we have two board members who will be attending. That would be Rufus and Julie. Therefore, I move to approve the attendance of those board members at the MSBA conference on January eleventh and twelfth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Actually, personnel, medical leaves, Del?
Ashley Skevel, a high school math teacher, has requested a medical leave effective February twenty-eighth on two thousand eighteen through April sixth of two thousand eighteen. And I would move to approve that recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And secondly, we have Bev Laven, Title One aide, has requested a medical leave effective November twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, through January eighth of two thousand eighteen. And I would recommend that we approve that leave as well.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One more, employment?
And then if you look at Appendix B, it shows the, the extra-duty salary schedule for the winter sports and the list of coaches that will be here. I believe there's like twenty-four coaches listed with five new added to the list. And I would make a motion to approve the employment of the athletic coaches for the winter sports for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year as reflected in Appendix B.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're on to board committee reports. Junior high student lunch?
Yes, we met with some junior high students on the twenty-seventh of October. Myself, Dan, and Julie were in attendance. It was a wonderful lunch that we had with them. They, we talked about everything from electives to possible student clubs for junior high students. Talked about standards-based grading, the transition from junior, from sixth grade to junior high school. We talked about the transition for new students to our district and technology usage. It was really a very informative meeting. They had some very good ideas, and I know Principal Tradeau was there, and he's, he listened to what they had to say and is looking at implementing or discussing some of those items further. and he's, he listened to what they had to say and is looking at implementing or discussing some of those items further.
Some very forthright and honest and very bright young men and women in the room with us that day. And they brought forward lots of good ideas and feedback.
It was great to meet with them. We plan on meeting with them again, or at least another, a junior high group in the spring as well.
Very good. And we also had our monthly breakfast with the board at the high school on November 8th. And myself and Nicole and Dan and Joe were there. And we had three students that spent some time visiting with us, sharing their thoughts about some of their coursework. These are all seniors, so thoughts about the preparation and the information that they've been given regarding the college application process and some suggestions for making some improvements. It was a very engaged bunch of students. And I think the monthly presence of the board at the high school is helping to, you know, to start a dialogue, you know, for the, so that, so the board can hear from the students. Nicole and Dan, anything?
I would just say to any of the students at the high school, to keep an eye out for when the next one will be. You don't have any, there's no prerequisite for being able to come to do this. You can be a freshman, you can be any grade. You don't have to be an honor student or on student council or anything like that. If you have an idea or you just want to talk about something, that's an excellent place to do it. And honestly, it's the place where we get some of our best feedback and best ideas is right there, face-to-face in those kind of meetings. That's why I like going to them.
Okay, very good. CER advisory board?
Yes, I attended the Community Ed Advisory Board Meeting on November the 9th. And a pretty typical monthly board meeting. One thing that was different though is that Ruth Cypher, who's a city councilwoman, she is attending that meeting also as a representative of the city. And, you know, Community Ed does a terrific job. And of all the things that they do, and every month, they give us a list of all the events that they are sponsoring and the number of attendees that come to different events. And, but the budget for Community Ed is tight. And of course, they get some money from the legislature through the property tax levy. And that's not very much. And then they get some money from us and they get some money from the city. But of all the good work that Community Ed does, that is something that even Ruth Cypher said that, you know, she would be willing to come back and talk to the city about that. And, and it's such an important piece because Community Ed really serves everybody from birth to death. It really does. Well, maybe not the people that are dead, but, but from birth to the, to elderly people, I should say. With that said, since I have the microphone, Mr. President, I'm going to add two more things that I forgot to add. You remember a number of years ago, the school district installed our new well. Do you remember that, about five, five years ago or so? And anyway, I have a report that Sue has, she tracks this every year. And the total cost of the well was $46,341. So far this, up to the time that we've put the well, and we've saved $40,325 in lower water costs. And so the point of that story is that before the end of this school year, we will have paid for that. And then from that point on, we'll probably save anywhere from eight to $10,000 per year from that point on. And so it was just a wise investment. And again, I pointed that out when I gave the presentation at MRAA too. Just one of the things that we do because we all know that if we can avoid a future cost, that allows more money available to be used for other things. And so it's a good conservative way to do business. And that's one thing that's, I'm so proud of what we do here. And I had one more thing to point out, and that had to do with, I was curious, Sue and I were meeting the other day with Chartwell's people. And I was curious on how the breakfast program is going. And that kind of ties in when, when the four of us were at the high school the other day. I made, I observed that, you know, four years ago, there might be 50 students at the high school lunchroom in the morning. And now that all students, all students can qualify for a free breakfast if they want it. And both the elementary and the high school, the legislature helps pay for that. And so just a comparison between last year and this year, last year at the elementary on the 9/16, we just looked at one day, 525, 522 elementary students had breakfast. This year, at that same timeframe, 585 students had breakfast. So that's an increase of about 63. So 522 to 585. At the high school, in September of last year, September 16th, 132 students had breakfast in the morning. September 17th of this year, 158 students had breakfast. And then in October, the same type of thing. October last year, 143 high school students had breakfast. This year, in October, 177 students had breakfast. And it's just a great thing when you go to the high school in the morning, you see almost 200 students having breakfast. Because as we know, especially at the secondary level, a lot of times, high school students get up later and they may not have a good, healthy meal. They may not take the time, I should say, to take a good, healthy meal at home. But if they get to school and get their, you know, 15, 20, 30 minutes before school begins, they can get a nice breakfast. And it's just neat to see. Because all the research shows that if students have breakfast, they do better in the classroom and teachers smile more.
Everybody does better.
Everybody does better. We do. All right.
Okay, one last note. We have a play going on at the high school tonight and Thursday night.
Into the Woods, the musical.
Yep, there's the senior citizens matinee on Wednesday. And I think today, earlier today, the elementary school kids got to go see as well, or at least my son did.
Okay.
Has anybody seen it yet?
I'm going on Thursday night.
So it's tonight and Thursday?
Correct.
Because we moved it back a week.
Right, right.
Okay, good.
Okay.
It starts at seven, right? Seven o'clock, okay.
Okay. So I think we're done. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're done?
5:35, okay. Okay.